We have the, we have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes, July 5th meeting, please. Jack McCann will make his motion. Evie seconds on the motion, all in favor? Oppose? Carry? Okay, old business, PLZBA 2023-0025. 36 Pauling Avenue, two-family residential, neighborhood two. Requests a use variance. The applicant Cindy Ward is proposing to convert this former elderly home into ten apartments requiring a use variance. The applicant present, please? Obviously not Cindy Ward, but that's okay. Yeah, I think you should, right? Yeah.
With us tonight is Mark Mantra. Mark is a department. Just in nutshell.
Excuse me, could you just introduce yourself, please?
I'm sorry, Steve Park with Artic here. So in a nutshell, I mean, site characteristics, what this application applies to. Site characteristics, particularly have not changed, other than used public units. Pressure, we're losing out on five hundred square feet. Always another thing staring at the current space. Probably got about nine thousand six per. Broke that up in a part. But. Spike lost every year.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody from the board have any questions for the applicant? Okay, do we have any other questions from the board or the applicant? Yeah. Do we have anybody to speak in favor of this proposal? From the audience? Anybody to speak in opposition? No, wait a minute, where are you at, Nora? You're for it? All right, then come on up. If you're for this application. I'm impressed. Wow.
I'm Nora Dwyer, I live in Six Blossom. And like Steve said, we had a very good, good neighborhood meeting. We expressed our concerns, our thoughts, frustrations, lack of communication. They explained their side of it, they had everything here. And we, we are happy that it's down to nine, we know. And the, but we know it's, it's not going to be feasible for them to go any lower than that. And we're, we're okay as long as everything stays above board. We can deal with the parking issue. We just don't want all of them to go one way. That, I know we can't talk about parking tonight, but. We're so far so good, we're communication, tend to put myself at hello with Steve and Cindy. We will email back with any questions or concerns, so, so far so good.
Okay, great. I think this is a, a good way for the community to get involved, you know what I mean? You came here before, not just you, but there was a lot of hostility and opposition to the program. And together, you seem to have worked on it over this time and come up with something else. I don't know how everybody else, I mean, everybody else in the audience has an opportunity to speak if you want. But nevertheless, speaks well of the opportunity for both sides to see what the other wants to do and come to a compromise. Yes. Yeah, right, exactly.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with it, and I go, you know, most of the other guys, everybody's okay with it. It's just.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Thanks, Nora. Anybody else want to speak in favor? Or just generally speaking, or are we up to opposition? Or everybody's in a fire because the fire chief is here? Do you have something you want to say, or you just want to check it out? Oh, Angie? Is there a time to address the parking? Okay, then come on up.
Good evening, my name is Eric. Awesome, yeah. Tight street. Fire room. It's hard inside the street. Good at that. Fire in the hand. It's terrible. Really pretty. Allow parking inside. Basically, child walk, that's all. It's tight when I was on the job. It's hard that side of the street. Got very difficult time. Awesome. Best day. Will possibly go to that. Second arrival, they didn't probably. All good and didn't try to go speaker out seriously. Awesome. Big fire. Pushed it. That's. There will come a point that. Not. Not be able to. That's a miss. Wintertime. Snow on that. Ever so, ever so slight. That's really. He would never. It would basically cost less than. Would not.
Thank you, Katie.
I don't know. I have no idea. I, I think there was a possibility to make it a one-way street. But that is a lot of both sides. It would only allow one way. Don't think. It's terrible, especially very. Go bags, every other thing that goes on winters. Should be more in tune with what those aren't. I just found out about this very recently. We, my predecessor did when getting that. Hope he can get. Out. First course. Allow parking. Our brakes didn't get it stolen. Again, he would not be able to get from Pauling Avenue west over by Falls. More sunny than that. Now, the project itself, I, listen. I'm, I'm all in favor of, of building progress, absolutely one hundred percent. Totally behind. However. One-way, two-way. Whatever you want, parking on both sides of the, parking on both sides of the street. Not for us. You still don't. I'm being told that it's. That it is a possibility. Or that, or that forced needs parallel. One, it might be, though. It, it would be an issue for us.
Well, I'm quite sure that before a street becomes one-way. Your, what people notice, let's try to go towards city council. Everyone's would have to make it a, change the street to one-way, two-way, or whatever. There's the whole thing, right? We'd have to do a graphic study, they have to get links to fires, blah, blah, blah. Everybody get involved in order to change the street from a two-way to one-way or anything like that. But it's, this just been clear. This has got nothing to do, you're, and you're absolutely hundred percent correct in bringing it up. But basically, it has nothing to do with this project.
It's, it's the city council. The corporation council. I'm not really attuned to how the process works.
Oh, yeah, no, but I mean, I'm just telling you, and anybody else might be interested.
Want to make it. Fire league.
Right, and, and when a thing comes down, the city council decide whether and how it's going to be a one-way street. You know, you better not be busy that much. Of course, you're gonna have to go back.
That's a decision.
You know what I mean?
I will.
Yeah. But we should have public hearings, et cetera. I mean, I don't mind years on the, like that.
Did hear the app.
Oh, did you? Might be selling out.
So whether or not. Now. You can find out. But even on. One on the, here, the time is just exactly. We want to do a fun. Right. You can fire to your.
Okay, does anybody else want to speak in opposition? Okay, come on up. Go with your own. Who else wants to speak to this proposal? Positive or negative? Okay, do we have anything further we want to ask of the applicant? John, both in favor? Oppose? Carry? We have a motion on the application. Moved at the board, approve, parents. Based on the following findings. Property is unable, for the most part, to provide reasonable return unless the variance is approved. Because many of the opportunities that are available for that property in that zone, I should say, are really not opportunities that would excuse applicants, yes, with regard. And only thing that is requires tearing the property down certainly not be realistic. For many of the other possibilities for that property, such as, I believe it was Mr. Keen sent us the email suggesting a control art building or whatever. Was. We don't know that there's a person who wants to put a control art building. It's not like there's a lot of, like, who want to be, who want to purchase that property. Believe that the hardship that's associated with the property is unique when compared to similar properties. It does have the, well, it had thirty rooms at one time. And so it certainly is going to be turned into a one-family house and so forth, and it. It does not apply to a substantial portion of the neighborhood. Because as I said, it does have thirty rooms in it. It is certainly a place where you can put a lot of the property buildings that are associated, approved in that zone. The project, I believe, will not alter the character of the neighborhood because it's always been a multi-yearly building. But also hopefully, the car situation will not become other than what it always is. Hopefully, people who reside there will use their bikes, public transportation, et cetera, would be considered a neighborhood where they will park. And the variance was not self-created because not self-created. This is so hard thinking, I'm like, don't take the. The variance is not self-created. It's not funny. The variance is not self-created because they had the property, but they purchased it with the understanding that they could turn it into the eighteen. And then they were magnanimous enough, I have to say, to listen to the neighbors and try to work with them to make a building that everybody would be happy with. Okay, so that being my motion to approve. Jack seconds the motion. On the motion. Evie? John Norman? Okay, Katie McLaren? Jack McCann? And Kathy Conroy, yes to approve. Okay, good luck to everybody concerned, I hope. To your neighborhood, not the death of you. Next case. PLZBA 2023-0041, eight thirteen First Avenue. Two-family residential, neighborhood two. Area variance is requested. The applicant Neil Cologne Architecture, PLLC, on behalf of the owner Joe Navara is proposing to build a three-story two-family building on this vacant lot. All areas are requested. The minimum set of structures requesting a relief of twenty-five feet in the middle of a setback. And maximum number of stories. They are requesting a relief of point five stories. Okay, so. Neil, you're on.
Fire line way back. We're asking to align our buildings. Better. Having a setback based water is. The banks are getting curved. That's, that's how I think of your flying. Your situation. So again, we're asking building simply fine, that's all right there. That's one variance. The other variant? Other variant has to do with height. Stories. Why would? Here's a diagram. So we have engineers telling us that our base blood might be as high as eleven. To get our two family area. Asking for the half-story relief, which you don't do the. Without the variance, I would either have to put this triangle here. Which, even though it might seem like it'll fit in with the. Our lot is also a lot that's not formal. It's wider, it's fifty feet compared to thirty-five. Reasons that proportion. But luckily, structure requirements, choices, wants to pardon lower level or for us dropping tilt. So if there's some visual permeability right? Or to comparable family. So. It'll be. Great shape. This, this is kind of a story. The two items that we're looking. A half-story requirement. Shape.
There's. There's.
Did anybody speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? Okay, did anybody from the board have questions to the applicant? All right, so are we ready to vote? Okay, Angie.
Yeah, just imagine the scale of that five-foot sliver, not in our lot, but our neighbor's lot. They didn't have. I was counting. I was reading item number two that's highlighted there.
Also, too, I mean, do you own over one hundred twenty-third street, you could, you know. I mean, this one's real between your house and the next building for people who want to do. Not to mention the fact that we know it's, I know it's kind of hard probably to. Put in, use only more just whatever this case we talked about that, but all up and down First Avenue. I mean, it is what it is, but there's a house and it's a number of feet and then there's another house and if you're going, you know what I mean? You can't knock down houses or every time you want to build a new, it is nice to like date things, I don't know, whatever for the future, but. In this particular case, in this lot, it's right on one hundred twenty-third street. People cross the street, one hundred twenty-third, behind the pizza hut. It just streams and people and parking lot and. Little, little park and swans or ducks or whatever.
Our lot is fifty. Imagine we're hugging here. So we have the eighty percent. Still be tight though. Guess that was what I was trying to get at.
John Normal, yes, we have a. Okay. He made it, he seconded in favor, you all, you up, okay, now we have a motion. Yes, John. Motion, he's one day. Um, Kevin LeParron. Kathy Conroy, yes to approve, Jack McCann. And John Normile. Okay. So motion carries. Good luck, congratulations.